All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:00 PM, and I like to call to order the May 22, 2024, meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Yes, Trustee Doherty, here. Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia is absent this evening. Trustee Sladek.
Here.
And President Gagani.
Here. All right, item number four is the approval of minutes. I just had one quick correction. It was just a quick little grammatical.
Sure.
I believe it was 5.1. Okay. Let's see. It just says "unemotion made duly made." Just removing one of those "maids."
Yes.
That was it.
Yep, no problem.
Other than that, looked good to me.
Move we approve with that correction?
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And all those abstaining?
Aye. Sorry, yes, I'm doing that. I'm not standing.
Perfect. All right, the minutes have been approved. Item number five is our financial matters, April 2024 financial report and May 2024 invoices.
All right, as you can see, we are 33% through the year. 1.3% of our revenue has been collected so far, as expected, due to the property tax collection cycle. You will see that there is a new revenue report in your board packet. Finally, we have two years of data in Munis, and so we are able to utilize one of their -- or, I'm sorry, expenditure report, not revenue, that has the two years of data so that you can see year-to-date for this year and year-to-date for the previous year. And as we move forward, we will be able to add another year to that, so you will be able to see the progression. Any feedback on the new expenditure report? Feel free to let me know, let Caitlin know if there's anything else you want to see on that report, or any other changes you might like. We are 28.4% expended at this point through the year. The budget lines that are over the 33% include 40% in conference seminars and meetings due to the annual Public Library Association Conference in March. That is a biennial conference that we do send a significant number of staff to. We are 74% expended in special legal, and to date, that is only through the expenditures for April, and that was primarily for the IGA, for our student cards with District 58. If you see my librarian's report, you'll see the information about the newest invoice from KTJ that was all FOIA, and that's about $1,500. We are 67% expended in data processing services due to the SWAN payment cycle and some things that go through them that are annual payments, and 90% expended on insurance other because our annual premiums have all been paid. We're at 50% in capital expenditures in -- that is, the capital expenditure line within the library fund, and that's from the teen and tween area updates.
I'll move to approve the financials as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financials as presented. Can we proceed with roll call?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Sladek.
Yes.
President Gagani.
Yes. All right, we have those approved as presented. Our next item is public comments.
Good evening.
Just a moment, I'm just going to run through the rules real quick. I apologize, I wasn't ready. Okay. Just really quickly, first off, the public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. It's not your opportunity to address, attack, or disrespect library administrators or staff. It's never intended to be a platform to air grievances about differing political ideologies or larger world events. Just a reminder, the public comment is limited to three minutes with a max of five minutes. Please address the Board of Trustees, and we do have a timer on the screen to help you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Eileen Brainerd, resident, good evening. You, the library board, and the library website espouse great ardor for diversity, and yet in practice, I see quite the opposite. Singularity of opinion is expressed quite often. This is quite contrary to what a library should be. The library should present all viewpoints and be the arbiter of none. Libraries should be the resource of information, not the promoter of one ideology. With June ahead of us, I hope that you'll be presenting viewpoints other than just Free speech means allowing speech that you may not agree with or even like. Here are some books that the Downers Grove Library has in its collection. These are newer books. I hope that these will be showcased during the month of June in fairness to all viewpoints. When Harry Became Sally by Ryan Anderson. Gender Madness by Ali London. This is a spectacular autobiography. Lost in Trans Nation, A Child Psychiatrist's Guide Out of the Madness by Miriam Grossman. Transformation, A Farmer Transgender Responds to LGBTQ by Linda Seeler. The Journey Out, How I Followed Jesus Away From Gay by Ken Williams. I may likely be called a hater, a bigot, or a homophobe for these comments, but I ask anyone using names like these, please cite the phrase that's offensive. Without substantiation, name-calling is just bullying. President Gagani, I ask that when someone uses a name-calling like "hater," please call a point of order. Ask for substantiation of the comment. Who said it? What was said? And when and in what context was it said? It's time to end the random name-calling.
Good evening, I'm Steve Wellness, I'm a resident of Downers Grove. I'd like to talk a little about inconsistency I see in the library's framework for releasing anti-hate statements. So I'm gonna -- and I've got a copy of it, and this is off the site, and I'm just going to hit on a few points because reading the whole thing's crazy, but --
Speak louder.
Speak louder. Thank you for telling me that. So, it says, "Why do we release anti-hate statements? To show support of marginalized groups through statements, the library can show strong support, ensure they feel welcome, and establish they have a safe place in the library." Next, "What situations do we write an anti-hate statement for? When do we release the statement?" Anti-hate statements should be released anytime a marginalized or community group is experiencing a need for support against hate and violence on a public and large platform. Local, national, and international events should be taken into consideration. Statements should be released in a timely manner. And finally, the last thing I'm going to hit off the site is, "The primary audience for the statements is the affected marginalized group, as our primary goal is to show support for the community in crisis." Now I'm going to jump to some things you can easily find on the Internet. From a CBS News site, they showed a map, there were at least 36 colleges, including Northwestern, with anti-Israel and anti-Jewish protests. From another site, this is something that actually happened in New York. Jewish students huddled in the locked library of a New York City college, I believe it was Cooper Union College, while protesters banged on the doors yelling, "Globalize the Intifada from New York to Gaza." And the final point is, this last one happened, I believe, in California. Paul Kessler, an elderly Jewish man, sustained injuries from a pro-Hamas protester. Protester's bullhorn strike before he died. The protester had approached the Jewish gentleman, and the protester, the Hamas guy, he was actually a professor at a college. So, what I'm trying to get at here is, we see that the conditions from the library's own site for publishing an anti-hate statement have been met here, here in the form of antisemitism, but I don't see anything on the site at all about that, and it was supposed to be done in a timely fashion. In conclusion, to these types of political statements and non-statements, you can make a statement by not noticing something, that happens unfortunately, and I would include an EDI as a political statement too, by the way, or DEI, whatever you want to call it. Do they fall within any library's taxpayer-funded and taxpayer-expected activities? I would say a lot of people would say no to that. But, if they do, then the Downers Grove Library should at least follow your own rules and put out a statement like I have just been talking about, to be consistent with your own rules.
My name is Robyn Triloff, and I've lived in Downers Grove for more than 30 years. I want to start by noting that today is Harvey Milk Day. This day annually marks Milk's birthday, representing the struggle for LGBTQ+ rights and the ongoing fight for equality, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Tonight, I stand alongside everyone who eagerly anticipates next month's Pride Month. This June-long observance provides a chance to celebrate the rich and diverse spectrum of gender and sexuality that exists within our shared humanity. People who identify as LGBTQ+ are fellow human beings deserving of equal rights, autonomy, and love, just like you and me. Pride Month offers an opportunity for the LGBTQ+ community to be visible, heard, and understood, basic human emotions that resonate with us all, and it's equally important for allies to actively participate. As allies, we play a crucial role in supporting and amplifying LGBTQ voices. By standing up against discrimination, advocating for inclusivity, and educating ourselves and others, we contribute to a more accepting and compassionate world. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the library staff and Board of Trustees for acknowledging Pride Month and embracing the LGBTQ+ community through thoughtful programming. By incorporating Pride Month into our library activities, you create a space where understanding thrives, acceptance flourishes, and joy abounds. Whether as allies or members of the LGBTQ+ community, we can all take pride in our identities.
My name is Jeffrey Mack. As a lifelong resident of Downers Grove, I find it offensive that many of my fellow residents accuse me and others who, with similar views, of being haters of the library. Nothing could be further from the truth. We love the library. If we didn't love this library, we wouldn't be wasting our time here. We would ignore it. We are here because of our love and deep caring for the library, and we take issue with the current library administration and board using our library as a personal platform for social activism. This is an abuse of your positions and the taxpayers who fund the library. Some of the issues we find most offensive and harmful to the community are bringing pornographic materials into the library and making it available to children, attempting to bring a drag queen in to entertain children with a drag queen bingo, spending $150,000 of taxpayer money to pay a radical, unqualified diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant to provide a cut-and-paste report that impugns the residents of Downers Grove as racists, crafting a land acknowledgement statement that goes far beyond a statement and into a lengthy essay that misstates history, degrades Christians, and the people who built this country. The only possible purpose of this essay is to demean and delegitimize our country as a whole. This is toxic and corrosive, especially to the minds of children. Also, this board allowed a speaker who is friendly to the board's agenda to openly insult a fellow citizen from the podium. That was unacceptable. That happened last March. Disagreement is not hate, nor is it an attack or a threat. Labeling it as such is a tactic of those who are unable to defend their position. It is intellectually lazy. I'm not a hater, I'm not an agitator. What I am is a lifelong supporter of this library who appreciates many of the innovative programs and services provided by the library, but who disagrees with several of the initiatives put forth by this library administration and board. It's time the board stopped divining this community with unsubstantiated claims of attacks and threats, and take the opinions of all constituents seriously.
Gloria Walshuck, resident. I also love this community and love this library, and I love it because what the library is about is making sure the community knows and learns how much wider the world is than just their own little space. And I think it's wonderful that each month, people come because they're really invested in the library and the community. And I think the library does an excellent job of bringing the world here to Downers Grove, the world in all its complexity, the people in all their complexity, and there's no reason to sugarcoat that. I think the staff, the board, is doing an excellent job in planning, the strategic planning, to help families, children learn with their parents, and all ages, learn that the world is a bigger place than just here in Downers Grove. And there are people that aren't like you and me everywhere. There are people in all their diversity, and I just want to say that I think the library's doing a great job, and I hope that, you know, that there are many people in the community that support you in making us all understand that there's more out there, and we should really celebrate learning about that. So, thank you for your work.
Good evening. My name is Noel Manley, and I'm a resident of Darien, Illinois, and I'm also an interloping native. So there are rules, and there are rules. For example, there is a rule that when you're Bill Nyeberg, and you reference yourself on social media as a library board trustee, but do not reference or identify the library, this board will use that as a means to remove you from the library board. Then there's the rule of your board member Sladek, who referenced herself as a Downers Grove library board trustee who is fighting white Christian nationalists. And when this happens, the board looks the other way. And by the way, where are all these white Christian nationalists? Are they here today? Can you name names? Or is this simply just a lot of rhetoric designed to prop yourself up? Then there's the rule that the library cardholder's data is confidential. Not only is this rule statutory, it is also a library board policy. However, when a board member's confidential information is discussed by a board member and library staff, the rule does not apply. And certainly does not apply when the library FOIA officer releases 28,000 library cardholder names. Now, to obtain a library card from the Downers Grove Public Library, you must present one of the following: a driver's license, a state ID, a current utility bill, a piece of first-class mail, a mortgage or a lease. All this information is confidential, or one would think. However, the Illinois Attorney General, Kwame Roald, has weighed in on this matter. According to an April 25, 2024 correspondence from the Attorney General's office, he states, "The library cardholders' names meet the definition of registration records, and any, any records that may exist containing those names fall within the scope of the Confidentiality Act. No provision of the Confidentiality Act permits a person to receive a library registration record in response to a FOIA request." Well, it appears that according to the highest law enforcement officer in the state of Illinois, that the Downers Grove Library Administration is likely in violation of the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act. But then again, both the rules and the law do not apply to our library board or its administration unless they are Bill Nyeberg. And it's interesting to note that the list of 28,000 cardholder names has been removed from the library's transparency page.
Hello, my name is Bill Cook. I'm a Downers Grove resident. My wife and I have been patrons of this exceptional library for almost 12 years. We come often and have never had a bad experience. The staff have always been friendly and helpful. We love this library as it is and cheer what it wants to become. I'm a PFLAG member. There are several of us here tonight again to show our heartfelt, enduring support and appreciation for this library board and affirm its importance to this community. At PFLAG, we are friends, family, allies, and peers of LGBTQIA+ community. Our mission is to advocate for truth and education on issues affecting LGBTQIA+ people and their communities, to promote justice and affirmation of their rights and personhood. We are 50 years into this mission. Our motto is "Leading with Love," and we are here to stay. Many of us have gay, transgender, or non-binary children. I have a gay son and a transgender daughter. They are grown now and well-adjusted professionals. They are kind and gracious and forgiving souls, and I am very proud of both of them. It should not surprise you to know that as they came of age, they both found in local and school libraries places of safety and harbor. They found welcome librarians with open hearts and curious minds who saw them and accepted them as they needed to be seen and accepted, people who shared hope and kindness and a place to feel safe, wanted and needed. What a gift. However, at that time, they found few, if any, stories with characters that they could relate to in spirit and truth, gay or transgender characters sharing readers' experiences of love and heartbreak, struggle and triumph, and situations like my children knew or might know, characters that had they been findable, could have been healthy role models and guiding lights, sources of hope and perspective and inspiration for how to live and thrive in the world. I am pleased to know that my children, if they could have grown up now here in Downers Grove, not only would they find similar library staff, they would find those stories, those characters, and those positive role models in our library. I cannot now thank bygone librarians, but I can thank you, the governing body of this library, for having the courage to let its staff affirm, love, honor, children, and young adults like my children, for providing safe spaces and giving them access to character-building stories and inclusive programming to feed their hearts and minds. Thank you. I say, "We are PFLAG, and like you all, we lead with love. Know that the board, the library's director, and the staff have our enduring support and
Do we have any other?
Good evening. Ed Brainerd, longtime resident of Downers Grove. I'm going to speak to you tonight about the cover-up. It's been two-plus years that I've been speaking to the trustees regarding the unsafe library environment for our children, young teens, and moms. Over this time, I've pointed out dozens and dozens of safety incidents that have required the Downers Grove Police to come to the library. And now, especially now, with the summer almost upon us, the library remains unsafe. At the same time, our library has welcomed in a host of new individuals, probably with all sorts of possible, if not obvious, social, drug, alcohol-related issues. When will you ever secure our library? Huh, "secure"? Not only are they not doing you anything about that, but now, we're now lying about it, basically saying, "Hey, there are no safety problems here." That's somewhere else. Case in point, let me take you back to the library board meeting, February 28, '24. At this meeting and during the director's comments portion, I was basically called a liar for pointing out one of the most egregious incidents that's occurred in our library. That incident was regarding a drunk man wandering through the children's room. The comment in the director's comment portion of the meeting was, "That's never happened in our library. It happened in some other library." And there's an individual, that's me, who is constantly citing that incident, how it occurred in the library. That's not true. Well, as I've stated in the past, I have the incident report right here, folks, the one that no one seems to be able to find anymore, and it did happen in our library. FYI, you can go to that video of the 2/28 meeting at the 1 hour 20 minute mark, and you can hear for yourself from the director's mouth denying this incident, therefore calling me a liar. Three months have passed since I reported this incident, even sending the director the date and the incident number at her request, and to date, I've heard nothing back. Here's why I've heard nothing back. The incident did occur, the library director has lied to me and the residents that it never happened, and now you're covering it up. I demand an explanation and an apology, and in my opinion, the director should be fired, since when is lying to a Downers Grove resident considered okay? It's now more than obvious the library and you, the trustees, continue to do nothing about safety and the library for our children, and now the lie, the cover-up. This is hard to understand, knowing that the library operates with a $6 million annual budget and pays the director north of $160,000 a year. Let that sink in. One might think with a $6 million budget, security and dealing with social issues within the library would be no problem. But such is not the case, and the library remains unsafe for moms. There are young children and young teens, and they will not tell us, you folks, will not tell us, rather you lie about it. So beware, here's what you and your children might encounter this summer: individuals drinking, doing drugs, viewing porn, fighting, swearing, et cetera. Director Milovic, I'm waiting to hear from you as to why you lied to me about the drunken Director Milovic, I'm waiting to hear from you as to why you lied to me about the drunken children's room, and I demand your apology.
Hi, my name is Mike Lyon. I'm a resident of Downers Grove. And I was looking at last month's board packet for April 24th. I understand, I wasn't here for the meeting, I understand that things ran a little bit short, public comment got a little bit goofy. But at the head of the library director's report, there's a section titled "Apology to Ed Briner, Incident 864." I can read it, but it's in the board packet, you can find it. Explains, I'll summarize. He explains that, well, I'll just read it, how about that? "My sincere apologies to Mr. Ed Briner for my statements regarding Incident 864, originally Incident 919, occurred on December 9, 2022. I was wrong in my statements. On February 8, '24, an intoxicated individual did enter the kids' room at approximately 3:30 PM on December 9, 2022. Building Operations Manager, Daniel Bur- uh, Dan, I'm sorry, responded with the individual leaving quietly moments later. The Downers Grove Police Department was called after the individual exited the library to provide them information that the, uh, provide them information that the intoxicated individual was roaming the streets. My own lack, and I appreciate Ms. Milovic's humility here, my own lack of skill in searching our new incident tracking software and imperfect recall of the responsive documents from the June, uh, January 23, 2023 FOIA request made by Mr. Briner led to my erroneous statements. Because the 911 call was made in a follow-up comment, it was not listed as in the infraction category. So none of my searches resulted in a result. A redacted copy of the incident report is attached. I was not personally involved in the incident and its resolution. My name appears on the responsive document from January 23, 2023 FOIA request as the person who printed the report on that date." I think it's important to provide some grace when making claims. I can understand how some residents might feel wronged or lied to, but I think given the statement or the what was included in last month's board packet, it's pretty clear that there isn't a cover-up. Thanks, I love the library, I think you're doing wonderful stuff. Thanks.
Jane Whuningham, Downers Grove resident. I appreciate the last speaker, he beat me to the punch. There has been made a fulsome explanation and a fulsome apology with respect to the incident that was misunderstood. There has been a repeated refusal to understand that the library is a public place and the public may enter. Not without its possibilities for disruption on occasion. The library is safe. I go there at all different times during the day. There are people there who are enjoying sitting in the chairs, sitting in the café. They may not look like me, they may be engrossed in their own thoughts, but they're not dangerous. And if they are, the library, the staff, they're not, I have not seen anybody dangerous, and if there's a situation, the library deals with it. So I want to thank you for your patience. I want to thank the director for her elegance in her apology and explanation. And I think we've heard this story now about, I've heard it at least four times. It's been explained, should be enough. Thank you.
We're just about at the end of our 30-minute limit. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? All right, we will go ahead and move on. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We'll go ahead and move on to item seven, which is trustee comments. Yep.
In talking to trustees from other libraries, they're astonished that more than one or two people show up at a board meeting here, and I just want to say thank you. None of us has ever said anybody that disagrees with some of what's going on or the policies, hey, it's the library. Obviously, we're all here because we care about the library. Otherwise, none of us would be wasting our time. So we really are very grateful for everyone who turns out for these meetings, and I say that sincerely. I also wanted to mention that over the next few months, the board is going to be doing some work per our statutory responsibilities. On the selection policy, I have received comments from the public, from kind of across the board, that there have been some concerns about that, and I want you to know that that is on the agenda to take a look at updating it and making sure it's in so far as possible fair and equitable and free of implicit bias. Hasn't been done for a while, we will be working on that. We also will be working on some updates to the bylaws to reflect some things that have happened recently, including social media policy. So we are trying to listen, and we really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
I'll go next. First, I wanted to say I continue to appreciate the thorough department reports that are included in our packets. I always learn a lot about the behind-the-scenes work and some of the programs I wouldn't necessarily be aware of otherwise. I'm also really looking forward to the summer reading program, and for anyone who's not visited the impressive Read, Renew, Repeat themed displays in the children's area, they're definitely worth checking out. I also wanted to take a minute during my comments to share my trustee goals for this year. I'm planning on attending three trustee training sessions, either virtually or in person, and share back what I learned. I'll be researching and also be learning and researching more about other library boards and how they operate by attending three other library boards' meetings. And as a side effect of this last goal, I've developed this like massive spreadsheet, I think, I think y'all have access to it on a read-only basis, with all kinds of details about other libraries, about 60 of them from across the suburban region, I got a little carried away. So lots of different stuff about like governance, so which ones are elected, which ones are appointed, what their budgets are, how many board members they have, the terms that those board members serve, how their meetings are run and so on. At a future meeting, I'd love to share some of the interesting things that I've learned by looking through some of these things and watching some of their meetings that they have available online and the ones I've attended in person. I think, while the Downers Grove is definitely a leader in terms, you know, in terms of libraries in our region, especially as I've said before, in terms of transparency, we definitely can learn from our colleagues and adopt some of the things that they've put into place at their libraries to make our own organization better. One of the things I've seen and marveled at in the last few years as a trustee, and tonight's meeting is no exception, is how different people can take the same information and interpret it in completely different ways. So we heard it here tonight, community members living, for the most part, here in Downers Grove, coexisting and going to the same grocery stores and attending the same sporting events and concerts and whatnot, some saying they're ideologically opposed to the library spending taxpayer money on Pride Month, and some saying that celebrating the LGBTQ community makes a critical difference to their family feeling welcome and included here. And here's the thing for us all to remember, though, both of those perspectives can and do, as we saw tonight, exist simultaneously in our diverse community. Our public resources like our library or our police department or Stormwater Commission don't exist for one group or another, they can't. Our community is diverse along many dimensions, and even I, the eternal idealist, realize we're never going to 100% agree on what's most important and how we might, what means we might take to get there. So it goes back to this idea that the library is not here to provide everything for everyone, but rather something for everyone. DGPL has such a wide range of collections and programs and services, I'm very grateful for that, and I think it would be nearly impossible to browse all the things that we have available without finding at least one thing that piques your interest. But it's equally impossible that each of the things you encounter is exactly what you want or what you agree with. I really enjoy discussing the role of Indonesia in world politics through the Great Decisions book, our discussion group, but I can, I know those things aren't for everyone. Just like I don't care to play Dungeons and Dragons, and I don't read celebrity biographies, and I don't particularly need technology training, but I recognize that those things hold value for other members of our community, and I don't begrudge their existence. I'm actually really glad tonight that several of our public speakers acknowledge their love of the library and their desire to improve our community, because I agree, and I apologize who said it earlier, if you're coming to our meetings and taking the time to submit FOIA's and create social media posts, the library almost certainly means something to you, because that's a lot of time and energy to spend on us otherwise. So as trustee Sladek mentioned earlier, I am glad for all of you, and I appreciate all of you coming and sharing your opinions with us. I just had two quick questions based on stuff in the, well, one thing on the board in the packet, and then one other thing that just came to mind this month. I was wondering about Lucas's report from Access Services and whether the unexpected shift of BSN Books was going to impact our budget. I don't know, probably no one here, well, maybe no one here knows the answer to that, but I'd be curious about that for the future. I know it wasn't, it was, like I said, unexpected, and I was just curious about what the, what the impact might be. And then I was wondering, and Julie referenced this earlier, given the number of intensity and and intensity of the FOIA's that we've received in the last year and maybe a little bit longer, if we should consider having another staff member trained to be a FOIA officer? And as I was doing all this research to look at other libraries and stuff, of the 52 that had named FOIA officers on their websites, a good number of them are like us, 39% are like us, where the director is the sole FOIA officer. So it's not unusual for us to have that situation. About 29% have the director and another person, usually someone in the business office or maybe the deputy director or assistant director, and then the remainder, about 32% have someone else altogether, an admin assistant or again, a deputy director, and in a couple cases, it's actually even a trustee, which I found really odd and interesting. And I'm not volunteering, I'll just put that out there. So I just was curious, I wasn't sure if adding another FOIA officer would incur an additional expense or, you know, training that person up, or if it would complicate what, how we do things currently. I, you know, I know it's, there's a lot, and it's fast and furious in terms of getting those things processed and out, but I'd be curious to talk about that, probably not tonight, but at a future meeting. So, thank you.
Couple of things. First of all, I want to echo what she just said. I wish I'd said all that, because, and also the thank you to all of you in the audience for being here tonight. So many of you said you loved the library. I think almost everybody in the room loves the library, and that's the reason you're here tonight, and I thank you for that, and we appreciate your comments. I personally very much appreciate the adherence to the rather simple rules that we have to put in place under the law to keep order, and that you address your comments to the board and not to staff, and we appreciate that you've done that almost entirely tonight. So thank you so much. I don't mind people, I've said this many times, I don't mind people who disagree with me. I'm here as part of the democratic process, and I really mean it when I say I'm glad you're here. The FOIA thing, FOIA is a wonderful law. It can be abused, perhaps, I don't want to get into that. It's, it's a good safety valve in our democracy. We may have to add a staff member to process all of the FOIA requests, because it is extremely time-consuming, and that doesn't mean it's a bad thing. There are a lot of things that are time-consuming that we do because they're the right thing to do, and FOIA may be one of them. But adding a second FOIA officer, perhaps adding a staff member to help process all of the detailed minutia, the redaction, the paperwork and so forth. So perhaps enough about that, and my screen just timed out, give me one moment. I did want to give a brief look at work in process here for my personal goals as a library trustee for this year. And these are drafts, I'm not locked into any of these, we'll be discussing all of these, but number one, I want to, and this is an interesting one, don't take it the wrong way, please, I want to help organize a workshop session for the board on the general topics of listening skills and conflict resolution. I think we already do a pretty good job in these areas, but we can always do better: how to disagree and still govern well. Secondly, in the area of personal training, that's already been mentioned, I've been on the board a long time, but an old dog can still learn new tricks. I will attend two sessions on library governance this year. Similarly, I intend to choose, I want to choose at least one department of our library and try to learn a lot more about what they do to contribute to our five-star library. I don't do this to inject a board member into library operations. As many of you know, I've often said that I think that my main job as a library trustee is to stay out of the way of the professional staff. I don't do it to inject myself into their work, but rather to support them and to govern them. Those are my draft goals for this year.
All right. It is reading, summer reading club time, which is very exciting. It's my favorite thing about the library. I had an opportunity to be at the first night of volunteer sign-ups, and it was, it was a madhouse. It was, you know, kids just scrambling for time slots, so it was really great to see that there's so many middle schoolers and high schoolers that are really looking forward to spending their time in the, in the library. So it's a great opportunity and a great way for them to get introduced to the idea of volunteerism and, again, spend more time in the library. So I think we had one of the staffers that was manning the tables there, I think she had 50 volunteers signed up within like the first 45 minutes, so it was, it was amazing. And congrats to all the staff involved in the designing and the promoting of the reading club. I know they spend a lot of time getting into all of the schools, including the high schools, which I know sometimes is a little bit of a lost cause, because they're, you know, going on 100 other things, but I appreciate the staff going to all the schools and really promoting the reading club and promoting reading in general. On the note of students, I wanted to acknowledge the continued work being done with the District 58 Student Library Card Program. It's a lot more than just a quick approval, it's, there's a lot of work to really make sure it runs smoothly and all the students get their cards, and then it really helps bring District 58 and the library together to facilitate the students' continuing progress. I wanted to acknowledge the continued success of programs that DGPL hosts in conjunction with the People's Resource Center. They do a lot of great workshops with computer literacy especially, and I know in just this month alone, they had 14 in-person workshops and one virtual that were, had great attendance. Jen mentioned in her departmental report that she learned a lot about a structured mentorship program, which I'm excited to hear more about. Jen, if you do more with that, I'd love to hear more about that, that's a great idea. And then last but not least, in terms of departmental reports and library reports, I just wanted to thank all of you, community members, for donating over 10,000 items to the cupboard this year so far. It's an amazing number, and I know so many people are in need, so thank you very much for your efforts. In terms of trustee goals, first I want to thank Carissa, she kind of spearheaded this idea of really having a more formal trustee goal idea. So we'll be working together to kind of figure out a great, a better, more formal way to present it and kind of a follow-up, because I think it's a great idea to have some sort of database of things that we've each learned and taken away from different workshops and stuff. So in terms of my personal goals for the remainder of the year, I would love to visit at least one or two more libraries and attend a library board meeting from a neighboring library, and attend a minimum of four webinars or live training sessions or workshops. So you'll see more about that in the next coming board meetings. And then last but not least, I just want to encourage people to please take a look at the board packets. They, they are long, and they're going to get very long next month, because we'll be starting our budget process, so, but don't be scared, they'll probably be over 100 pages, but there's- so much information in them. If you're coming and you're speaking, please take a look at the board packets, because there's so much information that's covered in them, and it's really important information, and it also helps give you an idea of all the ways that the library is providing a lot of programming that otherwise doesn't get a lot of news, I guess. That's it for me. All right, we are on to item number eight, the library director's report.
And I'm going to be very brief. Our circulation and visits are up. Take a look in your packet for all of those statistics, and you can also see that our incident reports are down there, less than half of what they were in April of last year. And I am handing my time over to Alison Renell, our Children's Services Manager, and she will be talking to you about the summer reading program and about what's going on in the kids' room.
Hi, everyone. How are you guys tonight? Hi. For everyone who doesn't know me, I am Alison Renell, I am the Children's Services Manager. And so I'm here to talk to you guys about two things tonight, starting with summer reading, which did start on this past Monday. Thank you, all of you who have mentioned it in your notes, I really, we really appreciate that all of our trustees know and enjoy summer reading, too. So this year's theme is Read Renew, Repeat, so we're focusing on kind of conservation, recycling, reusing, things like that. We're super excited. A lot of our decorations throughout the entire library are made from reusable materials. We use old book pages from books we've had to withdraw, things like that, it's very, very cool. Definitely check out everywhere, from up in the computer area to down way back in the baby area, there's all sorts of stuff in all the departments. As usual, the program hasn't really changed much from years past. We have four different levels. We have our Read to Me program, which is for birth through incoming kindergarten readers, for incoming first grade through incoming eighth grade, the teen program, which is incoming seventh grade through incoming 12th grade, and the adult program, which is for 18 and up. Now that you did hear some double over, because remember, we do allow middle schoolers to kind of choose where they want to be, and our teen and our kids' room kind of operate that, because we know that is a very big transition time for lots of people, so I'm sure Van would agree. We see those middle schoolers everywhere in the library, whether it's the kids' room or the teen department. So they can choose which one they prefer. So each program works the same as it has in years past. You read a certain amount of books for each level, and then after each level, you get some sort of prize. For the youngest, the level is 10 books, and where it's usually someone reading to them, but of course, if you are a younger child who's already reading, you of course can count that as well. For the readers program, it is six books or six hours, depending on how you're reading. If you're reading longer books, of course, you're probably counting time. If you're reading shorter, you might be counting books, just kind of depends on where you are. The teen program is also six hours, but three books, because again, teen books tend to be a little bit longer than the kids' books. And then the adult program is three books or 18 hours, so that's just because like adult, you know, books tend to be longer still, and we want to make sure that those adults are reading during summer as well. So each level gets you different prizes, and it varies throughout the whole program. A lot of it is very similar to years past, and I always like to take this moment to thank our many, many sponsors, many of which are local Downers Grove businesses who donate to the club. For example, Every Day's a Sunday donates the first prize for both kids' clubs, and that's just such a great donation for us, that we're able to provide every child a free ice cream for their first prize. And then we also, of course, have alternate prizes, in case you have allergies or dairy issues, or whatever reason, ice cream's just not something you do. We have alternatives as well. And then we also have many, many other ones. So that is, will be all listed on our website, I think it's already up there, and as we get more sponsors throughout the summer, because people do roll in late sometimes, we continue to add them. The adult and teen program will, you'll get to get a choice of, you'll, you get a choice of some themed prizes that kind of go along with our theme, as well as a book that you get to take home and keep, and then you also get a raffle ticket for drawings, and there's different drawings for both teens and adults. And for all of our clubs, whether or not it has two levels of prizes or three levels of prizes, you can keep reading all summer long for more and more raffle tickets, or in the kids' room for coins for our prize machines, which are always a really big hit, even though it's, you know, sticky hands and jumping frogs. But that's what the kids want, right? So that is our program this year. As Swapna mentioned, the kids' room and the teen services department have been super busy getting into the schools over the last, really over the last three weeks. So we have visited all of the schools in 58 collectively between the two departments, so that is all of the elementary schools and the middle schools. They did get into the high schools this year, which is also awesome. We visited St. Mary's School, Downers Grove Christian School. We dropped off packets for St. Joseph's School, for Avery Coonley, and for Good Shepherd Lutheran School as well. So we're really trying to hit as many schools in Downers Grove as possible to try to get them the information. And then all of our outreach partners, the preschoolers, received their packets to go home with them, as well as they have a special program that they can do in their classroom over the summer, whereas if they read together as a classroom, they can get a special classroom prize at the end. And actually, something that's super excited, which was part of our work plan for this year, was to get our summer reading packets translated into other languages, which came out of the strategic plan. We were able to do it sooner than anticipated, because we got a My Library Is grant that Jen very wonderfully got for us, so we were able to also translate it into more languages than we originally anticipated. So we have all of our summer reading materials in Arabic, Chinese, Korean, Polish, Russian, and Spanish. Those are available at all of the service desks, and we have them for all of the grade levels, so we are super excited about that. So that is something new this year, and something that came directly out of our strategic plan where, last year, where we received feedback that we wanted more library information, materials, and programming information in other languages. Let's see. Swapna also mentioned volunteers. We had 70 students show up that first Wednesday, I think you were right, it was 50 within the first 45 minutes. We've had another 25 since then, and we are currently at 95 teen volunteers, which is a new record for us. Last year, we topped out at 84. Sign-up goes through the end of this week, and we, because we still do have people calling pretty much every day since, asking whether or not they can volunteer. And our volunteers do things like help give out prizes for the summer reading program. They do that at both the upstairs desk and the kids' desk. They also can work with our teen librarian on a variety of different projects, and they can also participate in our STEM Buddies Program, which is something we do in the kids' room that pairs teens with little kids doing STEM projects a couple times throughout the summer. So it's just a lot of really fun stuff. And then, excuse me, something else that came out of our strategic planning last year and was on our work plan this year is that we will be returning to some of the schools in South Downers Grove towards the end of the summer to do prize handout there, so that people who maybe can't get to the library during the summer to pick up their prizes will be able to come to a local elementary school. We will be at Kingsley, Indian Trail, and El Sierra. And so kids, teens, and adults will be able to come and get their prizes there, and it's basically just like coming to the library, but you get to come there, and of course, we will have activities and fun things going on, and freeze pops for the kids, and it'll be a lot of fun. So we are super excited about that. Did you guys have any questions about the summer reading, or anything else I can answer for summer reading this year, before I move on to?
What do you do in your spare time?
Oh, I don't have a lot of it. Neither do myself.
Do you think it's possible, probably not this summer, but maybe do like a prize check-in, like at the farmer's market, the days that the library's there for outreach?
We have tried that previously, usually because the library's still close by, we tend to just send them back. But we did a few years ago try other locations in Downers Grove, and so that is something that my assistant manager, Tracy Skosik, she is organizing this, and so our first three, the first year back, we're trying these three schools. We tried McCullum Park one year, and so we're looking at seeing like if maybe we can work with the park district in future years, or something like that, too. So we're hoping that if it's successful this year, we'll be able to keep expanding in the future.
I do like that idea. I think it's really helpful to get, you know, people that live a little bit farther away from the library to come out.
Yes, and we sent home, since we gave out the packets at every school, we sent home a flyer at all those schools saying when we would be there. El Sierra hosts also the dual literacy and the bilingual programs for District 58, so we sent home those in both Spanish and English, and saying that we would also have card sign-up and things like that there as well. And the school's going to be sending out e-blasts later for us later on in the summer, which will have that information as well. So we are super, super lucky to have this great partnership with 58 that really helps them help promote our program. And then, of course, on top of that, we will also be hosting math club in our meeting rooms again this year. That is District 58 Area PTA's program, and they do it, they are in partnership with us, we give them the space so that they can come in. Again, that can be like one-stop shopping for kids in Downers Grove. Questions about summer reading?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm just thrilled to see this, this high degree of not only cooperation, but just enthusiastic working together of District 58 with the library. I grew up in this town, I spent a lot of time in the library, and I spent a lot of time in District 58 schools, and they were both wonderful, but they were separate entities that didn't talk to each other that much. Maybe they didn't think they needed to, or whatever, but I think one plus one is three or four in this case. And this library card thing, don't be bashful, we got 3,500 new library cards from this new program with District 58.
And actually, it's 3,500 in Downers Grove, we, 3,800 students, actually over 3,800 students opted into the program, which is fantastic. Those are, include students that go to other libraries, and so we're working with those other libraries to get them cards from their library. So 3,500 for us, plus we get to help our neighbors. And then these students feed into our high schools, and we do know that at least one of our other area libraries is working on a similar universal card program. Woodridge is working on something similar as well. And we're hoping if we are successful, and Woodridge is successful, we can lead as an example, so that our feeder high schools can all have people going into high school that already have library cards that they got at the elementary school. So I'm super excited about that. We are in the stage right now of working on getting the information all sorted and into the format that Swan needs, and then Swan will be able to upload all that into the system for us. And then we have a variety of staff who are going to be working on double-checking all the records against the data we got from the schools, and then attaching the physical cards. Julie mentioned in her report, and I think I mentioned in mine, students are actually going to have a digital card and a physical card. The physical card will be like any other normal library card with a number on it, and then they will have a digital card number that ties to the same account with their student ID. And that is because if you lose your physical card, we didn't want that to be attached to your student ID, because then we wouldn't be able to use that number anymore. So for schools and for everything the kid might need to know, memorize a number for, they have that digital one, and then they also have that physical one that their parents then can decide whether or not they use that for checkout or use at home, or whatever, which is wonderful. So we are super, super excited about this. And I'm hoping, if everything goes to plan, that we'll be able to, because we were able to work with Swan on this, that we should be able to give everyone, especially in this first batch of data, their cards right at the beginning of the school year. We were thinking at first we'd have to go school by school, but it does look like we will be able to do it, and get everybody who, at least, and because, I believe they were at 80 or 90% registration, so obviously more registrations will come in over the summer, and we will do those as well, but with this first big batch. Hopefully, right as school starts in September, which is fantastic. And myself, and then my outreach coordinator, Erin Lindzenmeyer, which, you say Erin's name at District 58, and everybody knows who she is. She's working on training for the teacher librarians and the teachers on our databases and different things they can do in the classroom with the cards. So we're very, very excited about that. But that was, yeah, that was one piece of my next part, which was about what the kids' room has been up to. Obviously, that has been a project that has been taking up the last couple months, and will be a very big project for us this summer. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the different things we've done over the last year, since the last time I presented to you all. We've done some pretty awesome stuff. I always like doing this report, because I can kind of say, oh, look at all the stuff we did this year. So we did a lot of changes in the physical layout of the kids' room itself this year, especially after strategic planning. We got a lot of ideas from parents and children about how they were using our department and how they could better use it. We started it by expanding and reorganizing our baby area, that is in the back northwest section of the library. We bought some new furniture in the fall that kind of helped close the area off into, I kind of call it the baby corral, because it has seating for parents along the outside, and then the toys and things for the little kids to do in there are on the inside. And I can tell you, if you come any weekday to the library, it is full of babies, and it is just a very, very joyful scene. So we did that, and we made some adjustments to the picture book shelving to make room for that back there. We also moved the toddler book collection along the west wall on low shelving. Toddler books are board books that have the heavier pages that are good for wear and tear. We're really excited for moving those back there, because it gets them on lower shelves. Toddler books, unlike most other books in the library, are not actually sorted that well into alphabetical by author, and that's because it's supposed to encourage young children to be able to just feel free to pull the book off the shelf and not have their parent worry about them messing the books up. And that's because that's a really important part of encouraging early literacy and getting children into reading, is allowing them to choose their own books and to handle books. And so we're so excited about that. So that was kind of where we went first, and then we started working on the tween area, which is back in the east, southeastern part of the library. And so we put in booths, and Ian made us a really great new gaming chess back there, and he put in some awesome power in the wall, so we have a new tween gaming station back there. We have an interactive touch table for more games, we have tables, we have board games, and it has really become another place for teens and tweens to hang out. And we really do get all ages back there, especially after school in the evening, because that is something that we also learned, is that we wanted to make sure that we were giving our teens and tweens something to do when they visited the library, and that we weren't just focused on our littlest ones. So since we've had that gaming section up there, our statistics for that section have matched the gaming we have in the STEM room. We still have dual gaming going on right now. At some point, the plan is to have gaming mostly focused in the tween area, because we have some future plans for the STEM room that involve making, which I'll talk a little bit more in a minute. We also just recently made some changes to our readers section. This is the section for kindergarten, first grade, those very first books you're reading. We, I used to be in a pinwheel, and I added a little bit more shelving and put them in two straight lines. This is, especially over the summer, an incredibly popular section, is one of the highest turnovers after picture books in our collection. And we gave them more space, as well as making it a little bit easier for patrons to navigate. In that reader section, we also added more games, and we have a coloring table and station now, too, because we were also, we know we get so many people in the library in the morning, that they're always looking for things to do, so sometimes the play area itself can be really full, so we've been trying to flex our space a little bit, so that areas like that center readers area, or even areas like the tween area, that don't have tweens in it at 10:00 a.m. on a weekday during the school year, can be used, and then we can shift that stuff out of there after school. So kind of like thinking about how our space can be flexible. We also recently moved our holiday books into a holiday section. We used to only have Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and Halloween separate for holidays, and that's because it had to do with spacing, it's what we had room for. But we have now created a much more dynamic and inclusive holiday section that has, pretty much if we have a book on it, and it is a religious holiday, or a national holiday, or a cultural holiday, it has a section on it. And if we don't, it's because there either isn't a book yet, or we haven't created it yet, because we haven't found that book yet. So if we find it, it gets a section, and so that is the last row of our bin shelving now. So we're super excited about that. We've had lots of teachers super excited about that, too, because there's just one place that they can go to get what they need. And then finally, we've added some new things this year. We just added the Tonys. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with this, but they are a small wireless speaker that come with little figurines that you put on top. The figurines look like the characters, so there's like an Elsa figurine, and she's loaded up with Frozen songs and Frozen stories, and you sit her on top of the speaker, and some magic Bluetooth stuff happens, and then it plays Elsa. My three-year-old has one, and she loves it. And now we can check out additional figurines from the library. And so we just added five of the speakers that people can take home and test out, as well as about well as about two dozen of the figurines. And when we put them out, every single thing was on hold, and those shelves have been empty, even though we just started the collection. So we just ordered another three dozen figurines to go out for circulation, so. And most, a lot of them that are already in also already have holes on them, so we are super excited about that. There's another similar type of function called Yodo Cards. I'm saying these words because the parents who know what these are are very excited. That's what we're adding next over the summer. Of course, we added our accessibility kits last year. We've continued to add to those. We've had to add additional copies of things that have been super popular so far this year. And then we just added a set of early learning kits, and so these are in the Anything Emporium, and they are kits of, it's some sort of manipulative in a book and usually other information for parents on how to use it to work on sensory exploration or fine motor skills or gross motor skills or color identification. And so these are Anything Emporiums for our youngest, zero to five, so it's kind of what we've been doing physically. Programming has been huge for us. I think I mentioned this in my board report every single time, but our program attendance has just been up every single year coming back from the pandemic. In 2023, we had five hundred and thirty-three events in-house with over twenty thousand children in attendance. And then if you include our outreach programs that we do at the schools, our passive programs, which are just like our scavenger hunts, things like that, we had forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-three children attendees of things the Kids' Room put on last year, which is fifteen thousand more than we had in 2022. And so far, in 2024, we are on track to beat those numbers because we are already at four hundred and seventy-five programs and about twenty thousand in attendance. So, and we're not even halfway through the year yet, and summer is our, our biggest time. So we have just been super busy, and people are in the library all the time, using it, attending programs, and hanging out in the Kids' Room. But of course, we are also outside the library. We saw about fourteen thousand children outside of the library last year in 2023. We are still visiting every single private preschool and daycare in Downers Grove. We also visit the Park District. We visit District 58's preschool. We visit several of the church-based or faith-based preschools. We do classroom visits with almost every school, or if we're not in the school physically, we are giving their teachers books and materials. We did sixty-one book pools for teachers last year at every school in Downers Grove, with the exception, we did not do any for Good Shepherd Lutheran last year, but we did do some for Downers Grove Adventists. And so these are all the elementary schools that are in Downers Grove, as well as 58, Avery Coonley, St. Joe's, St. Mary's, and DG Christian. Erin was busy helping the teacher librarians, who are the ones who run the school libraries, and they had three new teacher librarians this year, and so she put together an orientation that she does for any time there's a new teacher librarian. And so she worked with the Avery Coonley Indian Trail and Pierce Downer teacher librarians who are brand new and were beginning to learn about how they can use us and how we can partner with them together. Let's see, I talked about the IGA, all of our programs. We have a lot of future things going on. We are working on the STEM room and turning it into more of a maker, makery type of area. Myself and my reference and technology coordinator Sharon has been working hard on that, and we're hoping to start rolling out programming in there during the fall. A lot of it will be lower tech making, but some higher tech stuff where we are looking at just projects that kids can come in and create, as well as classes to teach making and that type of stuff. And I'm so sorry, I'm pretty sure this is my husband probably texting me about my kids. And we also are continuing to work on programming and getting, looking at our partners and other partnership opportunities. Like I said, we have a very good relationship with early childhood providers here in Downers Grove. And something brand new that I actually just did yesterday, as I joined with a group of other people from the Downers Grove area who are starting an early childhood education collaboration here in the Downers Grove area. So I met with other leaders in early childhood from the YMCA, from the school districts, from PADS, from the Park District, and we are working to start a board or commission of group that is going to help support early education in Downers Grove. So early education is extremely important for children before they go to kindergarten, and we're going to focus on parent education, on provider education, being able to provide professional development, as well as just general support to that age group and that community. So we're super excited about that. We are going to be one of the founding partners of this program that hopefully will be supported by a grant, and so you will see more about that in the board packet soon. It just happened, but I'm very excited about it. And we are looking out ways, definitely next year, to start reaching out to our home-based providers. Lots and lots of daycares that are centered-based, we are working with now, but there are about a dozen home-based, licensed home-based providers in our area that is kind of going to be our next steps for outreach there. I'm sure I missed a lot of different things, but that's kind of what I wanted to talk about the most. And I did want to end by just plugging my staff. I have a staff of just super, super dedicated people. I have staff members who have been there for twenty-seven years, and I have staff members who are just coming up on a year, and you will not meet a group of women who are more dedicated to this community and to serving the children of Downers Grove, to helping families. I hope you get to see, I know Jen always puts in lots of the how did we do cards in the comments, and we get so many great ones, and so many of them call out my staff and how great they are, and they just work so hard. And we, I would not, I'm very, very lucky at this point in my career to have this group of people working with, and the library as a whole. But of course, I want to tell my Kids' Room people. So if there's any questions I could answer for you, yeah, Marty?
I just wanted to make a comment. I have started visiting other libraries in the area as part of my trustee goals, and when I've gone to the children's and teen and tween sections, they're too quiet. I come to the Downers Library, and there's a sense that there's an energy there. The kids are having fun, they're interacting, they're not usually being disruptive. Occasionally, we know that happens with kids. But the atmosphere that has been created, and that's a top-down thing, when you go into the Downers Library, somebody is always saying hello, it's open and airy, and some of the other libraries in the area are, you know, they're good libraries. There's nothing really wrong. They just don't have that same warmth and energy, particularly in the children's section, and I wanted to point that out from my experience.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else I can answer for you guys? Well, thank you. As whichever one of you said, I think as Carissa mentioned about coming and seeing our decorations, please do. They are going to continue through the rest of this month, too, so more surprises. And thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the whole department.
And I forgot to show you, this is their birdhouse prize that they get for their second one. Those are going to be art, they do not come all decorated. My program coordinator, Amanda, decorated this one special for tonight. But kids will be able to come, and they'll be able to decorate it themselves in our STEM room all summer long, which have a variety of different art materials, so we are super excited about that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item number nine is new business, social work intern presentation.
And tonight we have with us our Adult and Teen Services Manager, Van McGary, and our two social work interns, Andy Voinovich and Dawn Davis, and they will be making this presentation. And I think Ed is working the slideshow for us.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to come and discuss the library's social work internship program. My name is Van McGary, and I am the Adult and Teen Services Manager at the library.
My name is Andy Voinovich, and I am one of the social work interns from Aurora University.
And my name is Dawn Davis, and I'm also one of the social work interns from Aurora University.
All right, so in tonight's presentation, we are going to give a brief history of the program, as well as talk about how it's grown and the various types of assistance that our social work interns have provided. In addition, our wonderful interns are going to talk about some direct examples of impact that they have been able to make. And then we'll also discuss some challenges of the internship program and what some of the benefits of having someone on staff as a full-time social worker would be able to provide. And then we'll also talk about an estimate of what that cost would be. So just a brief history of the program. Like many other libraries across the country, DGPL has observed more and more individuals coming to the library looking for help with social services and other types of assistance. And so in early 2020, to help meet this need, the library started a social work internship program through a partnership with Aurora University, where they have a robust social work program for bachelor's and master's degrees. And with funding from the foundation, the library hosts two interns at a time from fall through spring, and with reduced hours over the summer depending on the interns' availability. And in the past, the social work interns weren't able to do quite as much as they do now, since we don't have someone on staff with an advanced degree such as an MSW, Master's in Social Work, or LCSW, Licensed Clinical Social Worker, to supervise them. But this changed in the last fall, 2023, with help from the foundation. We were able to get clinical supervision through a local LCSW, and this has greatly expanded the services that the interns have been able to provide and that our patrons have been able to receive.
Andy and I started interning at the library in late August of 2023, and we were the first cohort to have clinical supervision. Having this clinical supervision has been tremendously helpful.
To give you a sense of what that helpful looks like, as we navigate working with people in all sorts of different situations, to have a professional with that experience, particularly with significant mental health experience, we have the opportunity to reflect on situations and how we navigated them and get advice for moving forward. Our clinician is also part of this community, so she has incredible resources in connecting with other people in the area. So here on this chart, you can see how many more interactions interns at the library have had since we've added someone with a license or masters in social work to the program.
Comparing the number of interactions between last school year and this school year, we see a staggering increase of over fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred, I'm sorry, percent. The number from last year was through the end of May, and so far, just through the end of April, we've already had three hundred and sixty-two interactions. Again, this demonstrates how much more the library can do to help from someone with an advanced degree in social work.
All right, so here we see some of the different types of assistance that our social work interns have been able to provide since April 2022. Just a side note, previously, we used a different form to track, and so that's why that older data is not captured here. And so as you can see, our social work interns help out with many different types of need, from, you know, helping out with employment assistance, education, legal, mental health, caregiving, bill assistance, as you can see, so much more. So on this next slide, we highlight the top five areas that our interns have provided assistance in. We would like to point out that this does not capture the needs of our patrons in our community fully at all, since assistance is not always accepted, sought out, or even available. In addition, these stats are often undercounting, since our interns are often extremely busy and don't always have time to fully enter all of their statistics. We also want to point out that here, senior services, where it says eleven percent, refers to patrons asking about services for seniors, such as caregiving or housing specifically for seniors. They may not be seniors themselves. And then also, there's a category that's listed here as other. Dawn, can you give us a few examples that fall under this category?
Yes, some examples of this would be in order of protection, relationship issues, getting a phone, and finding a storage unit.
Thank you. So another trend that we have observed is a growing number of older adults seeking social services help at the library. So during this last school year, so far, we've had twenty-nine percent of the patrons that were assisted by our interns be people who are age six or older, and this is from data that they shared. And so if the criteria were changed to ages fifty-five or older, this percentage would be even higher. And we also wanted to point out that the importance of services to older adults or seniors was recognized in the library's latest strategic planning survey, where seventy-four percent of respondents strongly agreed that services to seniors is a must-have at the library.
Now you'll get to see some examples of impact. This slide focuses on one particular patron that I worked with from a period of about October to April. And so this patron, after a breakup, lost his housing and had to live in his car, so we connected this senior patron with Community Kitchen for access to food and showers. We helped him apply for low-income senior housing, which if you know anything about that, you know that waitlist is long, so we needed resources in the meantime. We registered him for a warming shelter in the cold of January, so he had somewhere safe to get out of his car. He does have a job, so we signed him up with AARP for free tax filing. And then we hit a bump in the road when he needed to renew his driver's license without an address. You can imagine that that is tricky, and so we were able to connect with PADS. And in navigating that with a case manager from PADS, he had been initially hesitant to live in a temporary shelter, but felt confident and comfortable enough then to move into PADS Shelter.
There are many different ways that we help patrons that come into the library. Some of these examples are that we connected patrons with a case manager through PADS, assisted a patron in entering the PADS Shelter, supported an unhoused patron in using Section Eight, a Section Eight voucher, actually obtaining housing, and supported other patrons in applying for Section Eight. Located a company who takes cash for renters insurance, which can be very difficult. We also provided assistance to a patron in getting, setting up comm ed without a fee. Assisted patrons with resumes, job applications, and interviewing skills. Provided support in phone calls to other services they may need. Connected patrons to DuPage County benefits.
And here are some numbers. So we've connected twenty-six patrons with food resources. This includes pantries, SNAP benefits, Community Kitchen, and then emergency gift cards from local congregations. And this was as of April. We've had a few more since then, but we've helped six patrons gain access to weekly showers. You can imagine how important that is, not just for personal hygiene, but also when you're trying to get a job. We supported eight patrons in applying for low-income senior housing, assisted five patrons in applying for Section Eight housing, and coordinated seven programs around mental health and social services for our library and the community. And then something we couldn't capture in numbers, but that Dawn and I were talking about and celebrating this week that was bittersweet, is that some of our regulars who we've seen throughout the year, we are seeing much less of because of the success of the program. They now have jobs and/or temporary or full-time housing.
In addition, as social work interns, we're also sometimes called upon by the library's building operation monitors to assist with handling situations that may require mental health first aid, de-escalation with trauma-informed practices, referral to social services, and more. Sorry, I'm on that slide. It's difficult to balance, some of the challenges with the internship program are that it's difficult to balance hours researching and building relationships within community services with patient interactions. With only twelve hours a week per intern on average, there is not a lot of time to meet patrons, build relationships, help them with their applications, research services that they need, develop community partnerships, do outreach and programming, organize the cupboard and donation drive, and so much more. The patron need for time with social work interns is greater than the time we have available. The length of the internship program is less than a year and goes by very quickly. We work hard to build relationships and connections with patrons and community partners. Then we need to leave, and the next interns have to start all over. Our limited hours and status as interns also makes it difficult to connect with community organizations. Some interns only have evening availability, during which most places are closed.
So next, we'd like to discuss, you know, some of the benefits of having an on-staff social worker. So this would help to mitigate many of the challenges that Dawn had just discussed. What we see happen often is each time that the interns turn over, patrons are hesitant to reach out to the new faces. As you can imagine, it takes a lot of time to connect and build that trusting relationship to share your private information, your, you know, personal details and experiences. In addition, a social worker with a regular schedule and more hours at the library would be able to establish a regular presence, and they would be able to, be able to be able to build those relationships and then keep those going, and then build those connections in the community and keep those going. And they would really be able to help out so many more members in the community in, you know, those different areas that we had talked about earlier with, you know, help with senior services, health services, searching for jobs, housing, transportation, and so much more.
With a full-time social worker, the library will have more consistency and program progress to the initiatives. We have tried to get so many different programs started, such as the DuPage County Benefits Assistance Program, a WIP clinic, and more. With the PADS Shelter and three low-income senior housing locations located in the area, we will always have a need and need a lot of support of social services right here at the library.
Along with that, with a full-time social work on staff, we may be taken more seriously by these organizations. We've had a few pejorative comments and attitudes about interns, and just, it would be great to be able to give referrals to some of our local resources, and maybe they would let us if we had a full-time social worker.
All right, so what would the cost of having a full-time social worker on staff be? So this position would most likely be added to salary grade nine level, where other master's-level staff currently fall. And so you can see that, you know, would be roughly between $48,000 to $54,000 per year, based on the 2024 salary schedule, and then also plus IRMF and medical benefits, depending on what they elect. And so our next steps right now, our current social work interns, after Andy and Dawn complete their program, our next set will begin this fall, and they will wrap up in spring of 2025. So our hope is to hire a full-time social worker on staff in May of 2025. And then this person in this role, you know, would have an advanced social work degree, such as an MSW or LCSW, like we mentioned. And then they would then be able to supervise any interns if we were to be able to continue that program. So our hope is to have that full-time social worker, and if the foundation is able to continue to support an internship program, we're hoping to have one intern supervised by that full-time social worker. And then with this combination, we would be able to serve even more community members, and they together would more than double the current number of hours that we have social work assistance right now at the library.
So expanding the social work program by adding a full-time social worker on staff will improve the well-being of the library and the community even more.
All right, so thank you again so much for giving us this opportunity this evening. And we just really want to thank you so much for your support in everything that we do at the library and with this social work internship program. We really have truly helped make a difference in many people's lives, and we are hoping to do even more so.
And just briefly, along with our patrons, it has been beneficial for us as interns. The vastness of this role, you learn so much. You're learning how to help people apply for benefits. You learn a lot about navigating the unemployment website, which for people who weren't raised with technology can be incredibly difficult. You learn how to access different benefits and how to tell people that we are here for you, and this stuff might take a long time, and to journey with them while they wait to hear back from resources that are somewhat lacking in our community.
Thank you again for all of your help, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
You know I love the social work program. It's a very personal thing to me. Some of you know the story. The question I have is, given some concerns that have been raised periodically about people who obviously have some issues being in the library, do you see a full-time person there as helping to alleviate some of that or, you know, do any preventive kinds of things? You mentioned that you're called in sometimes by the building management, you know, if there's some kind of incident. How do you see it interacting with the safety and security concerns?
Yeah, for sure. So we're already getting a little bit of practice at that, and we're grateful for Ian and the building monitor team, including us into that. Sometimes our patrons, who have some mental illness, when they're not, they're not dangerous, but maybe they're a little bit louder than we'd like them to be in the library or that thing. We work with the building monitors to kind of navigate that and offer other solutions, right? So, okay, like, you need this space, and you're being a little louder than we'd like you to be. How about we get a study room? And that way, when we do it, we're not scary, you know? We're not the building monitors. So there's that opportunity kind of for like, let's come up with a solution before, you know, the serious folks take it over. So that kind of thing, too. And again, as mentioned, some of the concerns that I think other patrons find when we work with people, eventually, they get jobs, they get housing, so things like leaving items in the building or kind of like, you know, hygiene, right? Sometimes it's difficult when someone's a little smelly, but if you don't have access to a shower, what do you do? So we help with some of those social concerns that members of the community might struggle with.
Thank you so much for providing, I don't think I even understood the depths of just the vastness of all the different services you provide, so I appreciate that. Just so I understand the timeline, so Andy and Dawn, you are interns through the summer?
Yes.
And then there's a new group of two?
New group of two will start at the end of August.
Okay.
And that's the usual cycle, yes. And actually, their internship ended in May, and they are nice enough to stay around during the summer. But the internship at Aurora University is just fall and spring. But we're lucky enough that our interns this year and like years past have been able to help us out during the summer.
Thank you for all you do.
All right, well, if there's no more questions or comments, thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item B, under new businesses, trustee term of office change from six years to four years.
I was also looking for direction from the board on whether or not you actually wanted to see that in the preliminary budget, which will be presented in June. And if so, you know, do you want to see it? How do you want to see it?
The social worker.
Yeah, do you, do you want to see the full-time social worker in there from May, as has been suggested? Would you like to see a preliminary budget with it and without it? So just seeking direction.
We want to know where the money's going to come from.
So I actually had a couple of thoughts about that. I think seeing it in the budget and without would be good to see that difference and how it does impact the budget. I mean, no staff costs take up a good 70, 72% of our overall budget, and that's a big chunk of it. I also wonder about a couple of things, and I don't know, sorry, you all sat down, so I maybe not be able to respond from back there, but I'm wondering about if full-time social workers, social worker in the library, you know, would be cost prohibitive for, you know, the budget, what would a part-time person look like? And would that even make sense? Like, would it do this, some of the same things that you're talking about in terms of being able to provide that supervision and take on some more hours than you all do now? But, you know, I don't, you lose something certainly when you have some part-time. And the market in terms of like who's looking for work and whether you could find a part-time person to do something like that, I guess is another big question. And then my other thought was, and Jen, don't hate me, but I wonder like what types of grants might be available for, for things like, because it seems like eminently fundable from a, from a, you know, social services perspective, from a government funding perspective, or even private foundation perspective. I know there's a lot of interest in putting money into community social work programs, and the foundation's been gracious enough to do this for the last few years, and we're very, very grateful for that. And I wonder if we could, you know, it wouldn't necessarily solve the problem in the long, long term, but in, you know, in the meantime, to continue to see the benefits of it and maybe even continue to see some of the things that you all were saying about, you know, transitioning out of that program and then turning into, you know, to employment situations. That, I think, having more information around that would help make the case, you know, over a longer period of time as well. So that's kind of what I was thinking.
Or if there are other organizations, like maybe the DuPage Community Foundation or something?
Correct, right, yeah. And I know that's a lot of extra work, so that's why I said, don't hate me.
It's actually Amanda from the, Amanda from the foundation. I'm already chatting with her about grants. So there's one released on June 10th. So I have to wait for that grant to become available, so I can read whether or not we would actually be eligible. And then Blue Cross Blue Shield has a grant that opens in July. And then the DuPage Foundation also has a grant that we might be eligible for, so I'm looking into those three.
I should have known you were already on top of it. You're like, yeah, I got the three lined up, I'm good. That's awesome. Thank you so much.
There is a, there is a clear community need. There is no question about that. It's been brought out in the open by our internship program, by other organizations like the Community Kitchen, and by PADS, and by Catholic Charities and some other organizations, and even the Village of Downers Grove, social worker whose primary job is referrals rather than direct services. Everyone is determined that there is a significant need. The question is, who can step up to it? We have put a very big toe in the water here, and therefore, I think we have a responsibility maybe to continue to prove the need and the value that hopefully other organizations will assist and step up to, but we can provide some leadership in this area. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see the numbers.
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with seeing it with and without.
Thank you.
And yeah, thank you, Jen, for already being on top of the grant avenue. All right, any other comments regarding the social work? All right, thank you all for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, on to 9B, the trustee term of office change from six years to four years. This is just a discussion item. It was something that I know has been tossed around as an idea, given our challenges the last few months. And I think the idea was just shortening the term would, would open up the pool of candidates to people that are a little more willing to donate four years at a time instead of six. So open for discussion on this.
Just, just to comment for purposes of, you know, somebody in the audience here who might not know what we're talking about, under Illinois state law, villages with the commission form of government, like Downers Grove, have a six-person library board and at least initially six-year terms. Now, at some point, since that was established many years ago, an amendment was added to that law to permit a library by resolution to shorten the term from six years to four years. It would still be six people, but it would be a four-year term instead of a six-year term. The appointment process would be unchanged. The appointments would still be made by the village council. They would have a little bit more work to do because they'd have to appoint more people because it would be four-year terms instead of six, but, so that's, that's the thing we're talking about.
Thank you.
And I think I'm understanding correctly, this is one of the only things about us as a body that we can actually do ourselves and not the village, without referenda and without other things. This is one of the things that we are able to actually propose or change.
Right, this would be an amendment to our board bylaws.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I have some data, because I was looking at all this stuff. I know, right? So, so like I said, I looked at about 62 libraries from the suburban Chicago region, focusing mostly on the ones that are like nearby, and then also ones that are similar to us in terms of population served and budget size, just, you know, kind of our peers in other parts of the suburbs. So of those 62, about a little over half have four-year terms. About 30% have six-year terms, and then there's some other ones that have like weird nine-year terms and stuff like that. That's crazy. Yeah, I know, there's some weird ones out there. Municipal libraries, of which Downers is one, are more likely than library districts to have four-year terms. Interestingly, though, of all the appointed boards that I saw and I was able to like research, none of them have four-year terms. They have three years, or five years, or six years. Most are six. And there's, but there's also not a ton of appointed boards in the Chicagoland region. It's like, I don't know, it's like 12, it's not, most of them are elected boards in the region.
Well, we only, we only have the option of four or six.
Correct, yeah, I was just putting it out there.
But it's interesting data to hear.
Yeah, I mean, it's not to say we shouldn't. I think six years is, it is a commitment, and that is a long time. I, as Marty said, I'd hate to like put it off on the village council, like, you know, every four years, okay, add it again, add it again. But it would widen the pool, certainly, because it's, six years is a long time. You know, if your kids move on and you want to move out of Downers, then you're off anyway. So it's something to think about.
Something that somebody pointed out to me, just, I'm not taking a position on this yet, but is that it is always possible for a board member to resign after four years already. It's not that we are trapped into our chairs here. We're here by choice, but it, the key, the key point is it might be a bit easier to recruit qualified board members if the term was shorter. That's the primary issue, I think.
When I was reviewing the Illinois Library Act for some other purposes recently, I ran across this. It was one of those things that I went, say what? Why haven't we talked about this already? It certainly is, is worth discussing. And I do think that, you know, a six-year term is a, is a long commitment. Talking about, you know, when your kid is entering junior high and they're off to college before your first term is up. So I think it makes some sense. I know there has been some interest expressed from Village Hall that we take a look at this. And it needs to be, because there isn't a lot of precedent. It's kind of sitting there, but there are, we don't have a lot of direct peers in Illinois, because we're kind of this weird setup here altogether. So it needs to be obviously approached with some pretty thorough thought put into it and good legal advice, but it certainly is worth the conversation.
Yeah, carefully, obviously, we're going to want community input to this discussion also. And it's not something we're going to decide in the next month or two. It's going to take a little more study, I think.
So it is something that I think we would want to explore more about?
Yeah. Direct the council to draft something? Is that what we're looking for?
Yeah. And there's obviously, you know, kind of introducing something like this would involve kind of staggering out new terms and kind of figuring out how it would start.
Yeah. Yeah, we would not, the library board would not be directing council. It would be directing the library's attorney to draft.
I meant like legal counsel. Yeah, sorry, yes, different spelling.
To draft the resolution and to kind of give you a sense of, you know, how that works. And then if it, if you do decide to do that, then of course, village council would be responsible for the actual implementation, and so some, a look at what that might look like.
Yeah, Illinois library law is rather complicated, shall we say, and it takes a lot of attorney advice to translate it into workable actions. What can the library board do? What does the village have to do? What does the state, if anything, have to do? And so it's going to take a little bit of work, but it, it's, it's worth taking a look at, obviously.
All right, so we'll kind of keep the ball rolling forward, and you'll see kind of some drafts and ideas in future months. All right. We are on to item number 10, which is unfinished business, of which we have none. Item 11 is executive session. We have no executive session topics to discuss tonight. So we're on to item number 12, which is adjournment. So I would like to adjourn this meeting at 8:49 PM. Thank you all for coming tonight.